Hello, everyone. I'm Anne O'Connor. On behalf of Bay Bridge, my Bay Bridge co-founders, Jen Kubosta and Kathy Werzer and the entire Bay Bridge leadership team, I welcome you to the Spring 2022 Whitefish Bay Candidate Forum. Thank you to the Whitefish Bay Public Library for providing this virtual platform. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for moderating again this year. And thank you to our six candidates, three of whom you just heard from in the Village Forum, and three for School Board who you're about to hear from, for their willingness to engage in the forum this evening and to serve our community. Thanks to you, the residents and constituents for taking part in this democratic process. And now for a little bit about Bay Bridge, which was founded in Whitefish Bay in 2019. We have a vision of making Whitefish Bay more welcoming to all. More information about our organization can be found at baybridgewisconsin.org and on our Bay Bridge, Wisconsin Facebook and Instagram pages. We invite you to join us at our next upcoming event on April 27th at 7:00 PM at Christ Church Episcopal in Whitefish Bay as we, along with two dozen other cosponsors, welcome the UWM team of Anne Bonds, Derek Hanley, Reggie Jackson, and Lawrence Hoffman to present on their very important research project, Mapping Racism and Resistance in Milwaukee County: Struggles Over Racism in the Urban North. This project addresses restrictive covenants in our region and includes restrictive covenants here in Whitefish Bay. More information is available on the baybridgewisconsin.org website, and there will be both in-person and virtual options for this event. We also encourage you to sign up for our monthly newsletter to be informed of many events and educational opportunities that we offer. And a few points about tonight's forum. Questions presented to the candidates came from you, the residents of Whitefish Bay. A request for questions was circulated by multiple avenues, including the weekly email newsletter of the Village of Whitefish Bay, the newsletter of the Whitefish Bay Business Improvement District, Bay Bridge's monthly newsletter, the Facebook pages Villagers of Whitefish Bay, Parents of Whitefish Bay, and Bay Bridge, and via the Whitefish Bay Patch News Service. During the forum, you may wish to change your view settings to focus on the speaker. The speaker center, speaking center, speaker setting will center each candidate as they respond to questions and provide their opening and closing remarks. We also invite you to participate in a survey that will be made available at the end of the forum. We encourage you to find ballot and voting information for the April 5th, 2022 Spring Election on the website at vote411.org and myvote.wi.gov. A recording of tonight's forum will be made available at baybridgewisconsin.org and on Bay Bridge YouTube page. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. And I'd like now to introduce League of Women Voters Forum Moderator Julie Bowles. Welcome, Julie.
Thank you, Anne. The League of Women Voters of Milwaukee County is a nonprofit, nonpartisan membership organization that promotes informed and active participation in government. As a nonpartisan group, the League never endorses a political party or candidate. It's important to be an educated voter, so we thank you for taking the time to learn about the candidates. As a reminder, questions for this candidate forum event were submitted prior to the forum by voters in the Whitefish Bay community. Where possible, we've tried to combine questions so we can cover as many topics as possible. Three candidates are seeking election for Whitefish Bay School Board, vying for two positions. On the ballot are Kristin Bensick-Boudreau, Nathan Christensen, and Dan Tyke. The candidates have chosen to be addressed by their first names. We'll begin with two-minute opening statements from each candidate. This is followed by the questions with 90 seconds for each answer, and then we will end with 60-second closing remarks. Lots were drawn to determine the order of speaking. The order of first response to a question will rotate among the candidates. Candidates, you will see a sign indicating when you have 30 seconds left to speak, 15 seconds left to speak, and when you must stop. Please honor the guidelines for the forum so we may make the best use of our time and this forum opportunity. Now, let's begin now with opening statements. In two minutes or less, please share your opening comments, and we'll begin with Kristin.
Hi, I am Dr. Kristin Bensick-Boudreau, and I have had the privilege to serve on Whitefish Bay School Board for the past six years. In that time, I spent three years as a vice president and clerk. I have been the teaching and learning chair. I helped lead the revision of the Human Growth and Development Curriculum and the Social Emotional Learning Committee. I am currently the Buildings and Ground Chair. As a pediatrician who has taken care of students in our district for over 20 years, I have a unique inside perspective on how school is directing and affecting our students' social, emotional, and physical health. During the pandemic, I have helped lead the safe return of our children back to school. I also served on Children's Wisconsin Back-to-School Committee in the pandemic and even did a Facebook Live on how to get kids back to school safely. As one of the media representatives for Children's Wisconsin, I have done numerous appearances on how to keep kids safe in school during a pandemic. Finally, and probably most importantly, I'm the mother of four kids in this district and have been for the past 16 years. Six years ago, I even had, I mean, for six years, I've had kids in three schools. The only school I haven't had a kid in is Cumberland, and that's just because we haven't moved in the whole time we've been here. I'm running again because I feel like I have more to offer. I'm not done yet. I'm super passionate about public education. I'm the product of two public education teachers, and I'm a product of public education myself. My job is to help make Whitefish Bay the best place for all students to learn, and I know I can do more to help achieve that goal. My qualifications, I think, bring a unique perspective to the board that has been very helpful, especially in the pandemic. But I know we have more work to do. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, Bay Bridge, and the library for hosting this event, and all of you for coming. Thanks for caring so much about your schools.
Thank you. Next, Nathan, your opening comments.
I'll start off by thanking the League of Women Voters, Bay Bridge, and the library for sponsoring and publicizing this forum, and to all the volunteers who have been working behind the scenes to make it work. And I'd also want to thank my fellow candidates, Kristin Bensick-Boudreau and Dan Tyke, for taking time to participate tonight. Whitefish Bay is an incredible place to live, and I feel privileged to be a part of this community. Our school district is one of Whitefish Bay's great assets. It is one of those things that draws people here, and it serves as an example across the state and beyond. Our district reflects our community, and our community cares deeply about providing an excellent public education to our kids. Running a school district is not easy. The district is a fast-paced, dynamic service organization with a complex set of stakeholders that operates in a highly regulated environment with strict financial restrictions. Whitefish Bay does all of this as a relatively thin organization, very efficiently, with little administrative overhead. The school board is a critical part of the team that makes this possible. It is the board that supports our talented and dedicated team of teachers, staff, and administrators by setting a vision for the district and making financial, policy, personnel, and other decisions that support that vision. I'm running for reelection to the board because I really enjoy the work we do, the mission of providing a world-class education, the talented and dedicated team of people delivering that service to our kids with a mindset of continuous improvement, and the problem-solving of maintaining and improving all this in a challenging environment. Because of its broad scope, the composition of the board matters, and it's critical to have a variety of skills and experiences represented. My background in business and business ownership and functional experience in finance, strategy, operations, and marketing have provided me with the skills, knowledge, and perspective to jump in and make a positive contribution during the past two years and the pandemic. As we move beyond the pandemic, we have an opportunity to make our district even stronger and prepare our children not only to be successful and happy, but to help make our diverse, complicated, and evolving world a better place.
Thank you. And finally, Dan.
Good evening. Thank you for those of you that stuck with us for the first hour of this. I know it's a long night and giving away an evening to hear from us. Thank you to my fellow candidates, both Kristin and Nathan. Thank you for the service you provided to the district, probably, in what many people would say is the most challenging previous two years any school boards across the nation face. And of course, thank you, like the two candidates said, to the League of Women Voters and Bay Bridge, and sort of working in the background, the library, for giving us the platform to be able to host tonight's forum. I'm running for school board again for the second year in a row because I'm a product of the Whitefish Bay School District. And in a typical product, I guess you could say. I've lived in the community for my entire life, so 38 years I've been in the community. My parents moved to Whitefish Bay because of the school district. They were, at the time, blue-collar workers looking for a place to start a family with a great school district that could produce great kids, and that's exactly what they found. And I think for all of you listening tonight, that's the reason so many of you moved to the district, because of the phenomenal school district and the school system and the sense of community that it brings. Along with the community, I work for the North Shore Fire Department. So I've served in the community for just over 16 years now. And I think time on the school board, it's a way for me to serve in a different capacity than I currently serve in the fire department. And I'm proud to also say my wife, as she's moved through as an educator, has found a place, a home, in Whitefish Bay where she's growing her career. So I'm excited to be a parent. I'm excited to be the spouse of an educator in the district and a long, a long life, I guess, resident of Whitefish Bay. And I think what I bring to the district is a different perspective than the board that's been the same board for a period of time. And I look forward to sharing with you tonight what I can bring to the board.
Thank you. Now we'll move to the questions that have been submitted from the Whitefish Bay community. And again, the sign will let you know when you have 30 seconds, 15 seconds remaining, and when you must stop. We'll begin with Nathan. And the first question is, what do you think are the biggest strengths and the biggest weaknesses of our school district and why?
Well, the biggest strength of our district, I think, is the, I mean, it's tough to pick one thing. I mean, you know, it boils down to people. I think we have a long tradition of providing a great education, and what that's allowed us to do is attract, in part, I think, is attract a lot of great people, both at all levels, in the administration. We have great teachers, and we have really strong board and a tradition of great community involvement in the schools. You know, and I hate to call it a weakness, but I do think that the weakness is, I think that, you know, I think sometimes there is, when things go really well, I guess, sometimes there can be not a passive resistance to change. And I think that one thing that we've seen recently through the community is that there is an appetite for us to look at kind of a, maybe a different or renewed strategic vision for the district.
Thank you. Next to Dan. What do you see as the biggest strength, oh, sorry, and the biggest weakness of our school district and why?
Sorry to interrupt you, Julie. I think the district, to echo Nathan, the district has so many strengths. And to give one strength, again, the reason so many of us and all of you are probably here listening to this forum tonight is your connection to the district in some way, whether you're a current parent, a parent of a graduate, and what the district did for you and did for your students. One of the biggest strengths truly is that sense of community, how tied the district is to, you just heard from the Village Board candidates, and I think there are some opportunities for us to work with the Village Board to improve, even improve that relationship in that sense of community. But how involved the district is from driving down Silver Spring during Homecoming Week and seeing all of those Silver Spring windows painted to the community outreach that takes place. That is truly what makes our district phenomenal and great. We also benefit from great grades and people who, we produce phenomenal citizens who go onto the community and do amazing things. But truly, it's that sense of community. I think it's tough to call something a weakness or, I guess, something negative, but the lack of, I would agree, the school board spent a considerable amount of time talking about the need to develop a vision and a strategic plan. And I think that's a huge opportunity when you look at the website and some of the 21st century learning objectives. I think there's an opportunity to really improve on that and create some measurable goals.
Thank you. And Kristin.
Hi, thank you. So I think, going back to what the other two candidates said, our biggest strength is our people. We have teachers that are so dedicated. We have administrators that are so dedicated. We have parents that are beyond dedicated, and our students are highly motivated, and they want to learn. And that is something that this community is just overwhelming with, people who want to help. You need something, you ask for it, there's someone who's going to give it to you. We need a lawyer to come and talk to kids, they'll do it. You need a doctor to come and talk to kids, they'll do it. You need a fireman. I had a little patient who went to the fire station, had their birthday party there. Everyone in this community is so amazing. And I would, I also agree, I wouldn't call it a weakness, but I think really an area of opportunity is our wonderful community was really divided by the pandemic. Anyone who listened to our, like, nine, 10-hour school board meetings, we had people on either side, and what are we needing to do is how do we bring these two groups back together? How do we learn with people who believe in masking and people who want to be mask optional? How can we make that transition for our kids? How can we, as adults who have been, quite frankly, across the world, acting pretty badly about this, teach our kids to coexist with each other and to appreciate the differences we have and realize those differences is what makes us stronger? So that's really what I think we need to focus on right now.
Thank you. So moving on to the next question, this time we'll start with Dan. One of the phrases we've heard repeatedly is the commitment to all for all. What does this phrase mean to you? And how would you incorporate this phrase in your role as an elected official?
Interesting. That's a good question. So I honestly have not heard the phrase before. I guess so I'll dissect it in what it means to me. I think when you look at our district, one of the challenges we've seen is the end of the 220 program as we sort of, I guess, I'll say, I'll say age out of the 220 program, and we lose that connection to our neighboring community in Milwaukee. We've also had some challenges with the pandemic, like Dr. Bensick just said, with people thinking about themselves. And I think at the end of the day, what I want and what I live at work and what I want for my kids is to think of all humans as humans and be able to sit and listen to somebody and effectively disagree. And I think we haven't, myself included, at points, been a phenomenal example of that to our kids. So when you think of doing something for all, I think, taking a step back and saying not, what do I need, but what do others need? And what can I do to contribute to that? I guess that's what that saying means to me, and I'm interested to hear what the other two candidates say as well.
Thank you. Kristin, what does the phrase "all for all" mean to you? And how would you incorporate this phrase in your role as an elected official?
Sure, to me, I think that, you know, how do we get support for all stakeholders? So "all for all" at the student level is, you know, we need to teach kids at their level. We need to close the gaps. We need to take, you know, the two ranges, you know, kids are really high-performing and kids that are lower performing, and we need to teach to those individual kids. And so it's really bringing it down to the individual level, but also for our staff. You know, our staff have also been put through the wringer these past couple of years. We really need to provide that social, emotional support to really help build their resilience up again, and our administrators too. This pandemic has just exhausted everybody in the educational system, and it's really about, we need to be a team again. We need to be a community, and we need to all support each other. So "all for all" truly means that big supportive community to help bring everyone up to the same level.
Thank you. Nathan.
Yeah, I think that, you know, if we, there are a couple of different ways to interpret that, and one is certainly at the community level. And I think that the pandemic has not just, you know, certainly the educators and the administrators, everyone's been working hard and is really stretched. But the community is as well. I think, I don't think there's anybody that hasn't been drastically impacted by this. And I think at times, it's been very easy to lose sight of the fact that I still do believe, maybe I am, maybe I'm naive, but that I do think that there is still a very strong core of community in Whitefish Bay. And I do think that, you know, the community supports the schools, and the schools support the community. But I think that it is time, and we focused, we've tried very hard to focus on this as a board and a district with the students and the staff and the administrators. I mean, we can only go so far but on social, emotional well-being and making sure people have the tools and the time to take care of themselves, because it's only when people take care of themselves and have that, you know, that balance, that then they have the empathy, I think, and the sympathy and the energy to also take care of other people. And I'm hopeful that we can rebuild that over, you know, now that hopefully the pandemic is starting to fade.
I was muted. So the next question, we'll start with Kristin. Teachers, students, and parents are all important stakeholders in our schools. What are your views on the relative roles of these stakeholders in school decisions?
Sure, I mean, I think this goes back actually similar to what we were just talking about with the different stakeholders. I mean, we need to support that community effort. And so really, we have to go back to our focus plan, which is, you know, we want to provide the best education for all children at the level, at each individual level, so an individualized education. So our teachers, we need to give them the tools to be able to do that, which I think we're really working hard on promoting that through the social, emotional learning, through the learning communities. You know, we're also trying to hit the individual student. We are doing a lot of assessments to try and figure out where the gaps came from, and we need our parents to help support this effort. And our parents, that's never an issue. Our parents always support our efforts. So it's about the individual stakeholders and bringing them together and really working as a community again to really promote what we need to do, which is educate our children to the highest ability.
Thank you. Nathan, teachers, students, and parents are all important stakeholders in our schools. What are your views on the relative roles of these stakeholders in school decisions?
Well, I think that they all obviously have, I mean, they're all integral and vital components. I mean, you can't, these things don't exist. You can't make a decision that doesn't include all three of those stakeholders. And I find it interesting that the question focuses on those three because, you know, there are obviously broader stakeholders as well. But I, you know, every decision that we make or every, you know, decision that has to be made or policy has to be made, you know, all of those stakeholders are considered, and their needs are balanced. And usually, I think that, you know, the goal is to try to find a way to meet everybody's needs. It doesn't always mean that everyone's needs are met 100%, but I mean, I think that it's important to balance and take into, and that into account.
Thank you. And Dan.
Yeah, I definitely couldn't agree more with the other two candidates. I think one thing or one opportunity that I do see in the district, so we did a belongingness survey as a district, and there were kids who identified not feeling like they belong or not feeling like they connected in the district. I'm a big believer in surveys. You know, sometimes surveys give you more information than you maybe wanted to digest. But I think throughout the pandemic, one opportunity that I saw is, until later in the pandemic, there wasn't necessarily as much surveying of those three different groups as maybe I would have liked to see as a parent in the district. With that said, like Nathan mentioned, though, you also need, at the end of the survey, not everybody is going to be a winner, not everybody is going to have what they felt their needs were met. So I think you need to be able to say you were heard and be genuine about saying you were heard and understood. And then you need to be able to self-reflect and as a group sort of reflect as an individual and then reflect as the board and make the decision that is best, based on the information you got that is best from those three groups. I don't think any one group weighs more heavily than the other, though. I think, like Nathan said, there's definitely probably more groups out there that are considered, but amongst those three, I think they each share a 33% weight when decisions should be made.
Thank you. So with the next question, we'll start with Nathan. Do you see teacher retention as a problem in Whitefish Bay schools? And if yes, what strategies would you suggest to retain teachers?
I think it's important to retain teachers, and I think that the district does make that a priority, and it's something that we, that we want to do. I mean, of course, we also want to be able to attract and, you know, new teachers as well. You know, I would not say, based on what I've seen since I've been on the board, I wouldn't say that teacher retention is a problem. I think the reason that teachers and other people have left, I think that the pandemic did take a toll on a lot of people, and I think it coincided. You know, some people chose to change careers, some people moved. I haven't, personally, I have not seen a trend, and I think it's something that at every, every time we've talked about this, I think, not just me, but other board members have asked this question as well. So I think that we continue very regularly. This is something that the board talks about, like, what can we do to, or what are we doing? And what else can we do to make sure that our teachers have the support that they need? And that's across the board, you know, there's, obviously, there's salaries, but there's also all the other forms of support that they get from the board and the administration. So I guess, to kind of bring it back around, I don't see it as a problem in the sense that there's something driving teachers away. I, but I do think that we do focus on keeping people.
Thank you. Dan, do you see teacher retention as a problem in Whitefish Bay schools? And if yes, what strategies would you suggest to retain teachers?
Yeah, so sort of echoing what Nathan said, I don't think that there's a retention issue per se. I do think I was troubled to see some of our leading administrators leave this last year and took the time to reach out to a few of them. And obviously, they spoke very highly of the district and their time there. But they also have opportunities, not necessarily that would have made them stay or would have retained them, but definitely opportunities for improvement in the district. And so that, I think, is something, I don't know to what degree the district takes the time to do an exit interview or follow up with those people that choose to leave to learn why, why they leave so that we don't end up with a retention problem. I think unfortunately, Act 10 has made it challenging or more competitive, I guess, for teachers to go and find the money and maybe not land in a 10-year spot. And that's something that, while we can lobby all we want, we don't, at the local level, have control over that. I do think that one of the big challenges facing us as a district is going to be attracting teachers. The pool of educators out there is getting smaller and smaller, like it is in so many other fields, and people are struggling to find employees to work. So I think we need to work hard to learn from what the reasons that some people chose to leave and then take that as an opportunity to make sure that we attract people and we make sure that they stay with us.
Thank you. And last to you, Kristin.
Yeah, you know, I think teacher retention is a concern across the country. The pandemic hit educators incredibly hard. I don't think it's, I don't think it's a huge problem in Whitefish Bay as much as in other places, but it's still an issue. And I think we have, every single time we come to different issues, we're like, what else can we do? How can we, you know, what can we do with the salary? What can we do with benefits? What can we do with just emotional support, mental health support? How can we help our teachers? Because we know our teachers are the root of the strength of our education. They are what drives our kids to learn, and they're so important to us. And I think as a board, we've really tried hard to really look at all angles and figure out what we can do to help promote that. And I think we've done a good job. I think Whitefish Bay is doing well. And I do agree, you know, I think some of it is just, it was beyond our control. You know, teachers had kids at home, kids were in-person learning, they had to stay home. I think there's a lot of different reasons why some teachers have chosen. But I think as a board, we need to continue to focus on what we can do to help promote teacher retention because we need our teachers.
Thank you. So with the next question, we'll start with Dan. And the next question is, Whitefish Bay's per pupil revenue is in the bottom quarter of all districts in Wisconsin. While the district's educational performance is one of the best, this lack of funding hamstrings our schools in multiple ways. Many neighboring districts have passed referendums to exceed revenue caps. Would you support such a referendum? Why or why not?
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's a really great question. It's a, it's a very difficult question to answer, especially coming on the heels of, um, the inflation question that the, the village board was just asked as, um, we're, we're facing, uh, record inflation. I, I think, um, one of my areas of concern for the district is because, and I don't know how many people understand how funding works for the school, but it's on a three-year enrolling enrollment. So, um, we won't necessarily see some of the, um, loss of enrollment numbers and some of that loss of funding until the next couple of years to really see the major impact. One thing I can say is I think the district is already talking about that and, um, is, is well-prepared for, um, and has contingencies and, um, and, you know, a contingency fund available, should they run into a problem with funding. With that said, I, I don't know, I think, I, I don't know enough, um, about the, the budget. As I've dissected and obviously haven't had a chance to talk to the business office to know whether or not a referendum, um, is needed for funding. I think Whitefish Bay is extremely both at the village level and the board level, um, very, very smart with their money. And, um, obviously we have phenomenal success with our students. So, uh, I, I can't say definitively one way or another. I think I would certainly, if the recommendation of the district would be to go for additional funding, I would support a referendum to get that.
Thank you. Kristin, would you support a referendum to exceed revenue caps? Why or why not?
Sure, you know, I actually am not in favor of a referendum. Just looking through, um, Whitefish Bay's history, referendums are actually really challenging to pass. They did it for the great halls. And I think if we were going to go to that, we don't, we want something that's sustainable. You don't want it just a one-time investment. We want to make sure our district runs within its fiscal, um, responsibility. And so I think that's really important. I think if there was some major project that we needed to do a referendum for, that would have to come up for discussion. But you don't want to do that for day-to-day management. And so I think it's really important that we're fiscally responsible. You know, and I think we have to look at, you know, what caused our, you know, our decrease in per pupil. And that's we, the pandemic, you know, people chose to go to schools that they felt were the best for their children. And that did result in a significant decrease in the number of kids in our schools, which will, as Dan was saying, is going to, we're going to start seeing in the next couple of years. You know, so I think the first thing we want to do is how do we bring these kids back? We want to bring our kids back to Whitefish Bay Public Schools. That would be my first focus. The second focus is, you know, continuing our fiscal responsibility and staying, making sure that we're not exceeding what we're spending and that we can continue to maintain the schools like we have.
Thank you. Nathan.
Yeah, I kind of, I kind of see this as, as a couple of different questions rolled into one. I mean, the, the question on, on the referendum is that, you know, there are really, a referendum is not like in perpetuity, right? It's not like we can pass a referendum and then it says, okay, from now on forever, we can exceed our, our revenue cap. The revenue cap is something that's established by the state. It was established a long time ago, like decades ago, and it's, it's different for each district. Uh, I assume the person who asked the question kind of understands that. But anyway, the, the, the only way to change that is, you know, as, as I think Dan kind of references to lobby and try to get the legislature to change some fundamental aspects of, of school funding. To Kristin's point, I think that to use a referendum to try to fund operating costs is, is really, um, not sustainable, because you would have to pass that referendum every year to, to exceed your revenue cap. It, it, the, the way the system is designed, um, is so that people can't, you can't just kind of get a, a good vote and then have it go on forever. So the role of that type of money, like a referendum, is really for projects. So, you know, something, um, or, you know, um, yeah, single-use types of, or building a fund. But, so I would not support a referendum for operating costs, but I think there's kind of underlying this question. The question is, what can we do, um, to increase that per pupil revenue amount? And the answer is not much, except to go through the legislature.
Thank you. We'll start the next question with Kristin. As we move forward, um, as we move forward in the current pandemic and consider planning for a possible next pandemic, what are your views regarding health and safety protocols and metrics?
Sure, um, you know, I am, you know, I think the pandemic was incredibly hard. And, you know, when I look back two years ago at the decision we made, you know, we really were truly looking at life and death decisions. And I'm really proud of where we came and how we started, um, you know, but we've learned a lot since then. We know how to keep kids safe. We know mitigation measures. So what we know and what we've learned with Omicron is that, you know, there was a rapid raise and then it started coming down. We have an eight, you know, above 80% vaccination rate in our kids right now and we're at a low level. So that's why we made the decision last week to go mask optional with the metrics, looking at, you know, the critical value and 3% in the schools. But I also, you know, am cautioning that I expect that we're going to have another variant. And when that happens, we have now the metrics in place that when those levels start going up, we can throw our mitigation right back on. So we'll go back to mask op, you know, mask required. We're going to go back to all those practices we did, mindful that we still haven't taken away like the ventilation, the increased ventilation and some of the other things we're still doing. But I think it's being nimble and really looking at what's going on in our community. But we've learned so much about how to keep kids safe. But the most important thing we learned, I think, is that we have to keep, we have to keep kids in school. The pandemic created a pandemic of actual mental health illness in our kids. And that's something we cannot go back to. And so we have to be really focused on keeping kids safe, keeping them in school and keeping their daily lives going in a manner that we can run our schools. And so I think, you know, I'm really hopeful that we've learned so much that we can continue to do so, even if we're hit. Hopefully, you know, hopefully never hit again, but if we're hit again, we'll be ready.
Thank you. Nathan, as we move forward in the current pandemic and consider planning for a possible next pandemic, what are your views regarding health and safety protocols and metrics?
Well, I think we've learned a lot. I mean, I, you know, you know, two years ago, the previous election, like the last, not last year's election, but I was thinking when I, when I first ran, you know, it was, um, you know, no one saw this coming. And it was, obviously it's dominated the last couple of years. But I think that, you know, we've learned a lot. I, I really like, um, the education process that we've gone through. And so like, like when protocols, I, I think a lot about the layers, like we've learned about the, the different pieces that there are to mitigating. So now we have all these different layers that we can put in. And so, you know, over the last few weeks, obviously we've been removing them, but we can always put them back if we see the reason to do that. Metrics are a complicated thing. I think we're still trying to figure out, I, I think everybody is still trying to figure out what the right metrics are. Some people just ignored it, um, and did whatever they did really without metrics. We've tried to use metrics, um, but I think that that'll be a bit of a moving target. And as we learn, you know, as we continue to learn more, I think that, um, whether it's this pandemic or the next pandemic, we'll have more tools at our disposal. And I think hopefully we will retain some of this knowledge that we've had about, uh, being flexible with metrics as well.
Thank you. And Dan.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, that it's challenging to predict exactly what's, you know, Delta looked different than Omicron. But it's probably going to look different than the, the next, um, variant that's out there. So to answer those questions, I think we've learned so much. And to Dr. Ben Siquegudro's point, number one is keeping our kids in school and keeping them. But, but along with that, keeping them safe and healthy as well. Um, and only healthy and safe kids can attend school and learn. So, um, sort of creating that balancing act between the two, um, is so important. It's, like I said, impossible to predict exactly what the next pandemic looks like. One thing that I do think, um, we, we shut down the Health and Safety Committee a little too early. And I think we have, uh, to Dr. Ben Siquegudro's original point, very early on in this, uh, we have a plethora of lawyers and doctors and all the, all the people, um, from, you know, Johns Hopkins Epidemiology in our community. And I think really harnessing that and staying on top of not just this pandemic, but mental health and safety. I think, um, harnessing the community as a whole and using the information and staying, um, ahead of the next pandemic or the next, um, public health crisis is really important. So, um, I don't think it's something we should just put in our back pocket and say, hey, we're prepared and we'll respond to the next one. Um, I think there needs to be continuous conversation about making sure that we're ready to respond. And to Nathan's point, sort of re-layer as, um, numbers start to creep up.
Thank you. So for the next question, we'll start with Nathan. Students of color and allied students have made efforts in recent years to draw attention to ways in which students of color face racism in our schools. Do you feel that the district and school board are sufficiently engaged in this conversation? In what ways would you act on this information to make Whitefish Bay schools a more welcoming and equitable environment for all?
Well, I, um, as a board member, I think, um, it's really important to make sure that we have a district and, you know, each and every student, um, in our district is, is welcomed and supported, you know, regardless of who that student is. I, um, you know, as a board member, I, I guess, one way for me to answer that question is, is to say, um, I would do whatever, um, whatever seems appropriate and necessary in order to make that, um, a reality. If, you know, in the event that it's not, I think that we have done what we can or what we've known about to support, students of color and, um, other students who, um, feel, um, marginalized or, um, you know, I also will say that I, you know, it's, it's a challenging question for me to answer, because at the board level, we haven't really been presented with, um, you know, something that we can act on, um, outside of the things that we've discussed and acted on already at board meetings.
Great, thank you. Next to Dan, Dan, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yeah, if you could, that'd be great. Thanks.
Students of color and allied students have made efforts in recent years to draw attention to the ways in which students of color face racism in our schools. Do you feel that the district and school board are sufficiently engaged in this conversation? In what ways would you act on this information to make Whitefish Bay schools a more welcoming and equitable environment for all?
Yeah, so, so equity, um, you know, it's a word that's tossed around so often, but it is such an important word. Um, and, uh, quite honestly, last year to listen to the school board meeting with so many families, um, who spoke, spoke up about, uh, incidents of racism or hate, um, it was, it was disheartening. And, um, I, I'm not generally an emotional person, but something that I, I was quite honestly shocked by and, um, and disheartened and had, uh, a, an at-home discussion with my two elementary school kids about, you know, the buddy bench and making sure people feel like they're, um, they're, they belong and they're a part. And then to see the results of the survey and know that we have, albeit a small number, but no student should feel like they don't belong, um, in the community or at school. And, and again, that's disheartening to hear. I think, uh, the creation and the activity of the Black Student Union at the high school has been phenomenal. Um, the district took steps to create an equity and engagement position, um, with Mr. Andy Drew. And talking to him, um, you know, it, it's not work that gets done overnight. And I think all of us wish that we could run a survey tomorrow and everybody felt like they belong. Um, but I, I do think there is more work to be done. Um, I think there's the opportunity to set some measurable goals. Again, it, it's not necessarily leaps that are going to take place overnight. But, uh, to hold the board accountable, and if I'm elected, hold me accountable as a member of the board, um, to meet those measurable goals. I, I do think that we have an opportunity to do better.
Thank you. And Kristin.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Students of color and allied students have made efforts in recent years to draw attention to the ways in which students of color face racism in our schools. Do you feel that the district and the school board are sufficiently engaged in this conversation? In what ways would you act on this information to make Whitefish Bay schools a more welcoming and equitable environment for all?
Sure, um, thank you. I do feel like we are very engaged in this conversation, but I feel like we have a long way to go. Some of the ways we are engaged, um, I think the key to equity is that feeling of belongingness, that inclusiveness is what we have to focus on. And as a district, we've been very intentional about doing that. So with the, um, social emotional learning, um, we've been very much engaged in that. The ESAR funds, we, we started at the elementary school level, we started the Kirin School Community, middle school level. There's a circle of power at the high school, there's Avid, the health clubs, Black Student Union, they were talking about. These are, you know, active things in our curriculum where we're really promoting learning the student next to you. Who are you? What do you stand for? You know? And that's that building that student-to-student relationship, then the student-to-teacher relationship, student-to-staff, student-to-district. That really is what's going to help promote equity for all, you know? But we have a long way to go. I mean, between the pandemic and the racial unrest, I mean, I think it showed a lot of cracks in our society and in Whitefish Bay also about where we really need to put, we really need to target attention to this. I think we're really trying hard as a district to close those gaps. Any gaps in education that might be seen, um, is inequitable also. But I think we have a lot of work to do and it's an ongoing process. And I know as a board, we're very committed to doing the work, um, and it's hard work and we're going to continue to keep working at it.
Great, thank you. So we'll start with Dan for the next question. Many parents feel that the school district and the board are not transparent. What would you do to improve that?
That's an interesting question, because I think, uh, the two board members obviously know, I've, I've used that exact phrase. Maybe not as intentional as the question is, but, um, about a question about transparency at a board meeting. Um, I, I think we have a, a significant opportunity as a community, um, and I said this in last year's forum when I ran, to bring the community together in, uh, there's open meetings, rules that, um, sort of hold hostage, um, the, the meeting, if you will. But I, I do think there is an opportunity, um, and, and the board should capitalize on it to bring the community together in a, an open forum with no agenda for decision-making or any sort of voting or action item, um, to truly listen to the community and create back-and-forth dialogue. Um, I, I think there are opportunities for additional transparency, things as simple as changing the current, uh, board docs, which I don't personally find super friendly, um, to, to get information out to the community and be more transparent with meetings. But with that, the, the lack of transparency also sometimes is perceived because of the rules that, um, open meeting laws provide. There, there can't be conversations with multiple board members outside, um, of the open meeting. And, um, obviously with the pandemic, I can only imagine the amount of emails that the board members were getting and maybe feeling the lack of response. Um, what I can promise you is I will do my best to respond to every email as thoroughly and make myself available by phone to make sure that the community feels I'm as, as transparent and the board is as transparent as they possibly can be.
Thank you. Kristin, many parents feel that the school district and board are not transparent. What will you do to improve that?
Sure, and I think some of it is education. Open law rules are the rules. We have to follow those rules. We can, you know, I mean, you have to follow those rules. You can actually get, go to jail if you don't follow those open law rules. And so I think it's really important for people to understand that everything that happens, happens in the open. There is nothing going on behind closed doors. What you hear at the meeting is what is actually going on. And so I think, you know, you can improve communication, but as far as transparency with the meetings, what you see is actually what you get. And I think it's very challenging, if you've never really, um, listened to board meetings before, to really understand the Robert's Rules and why we do that. And I think it's super frustrating for the public to not understand why, when they make a public comment, we're not allowed to respond back and can't engage in dialogue in that manner. We actually have had two open forum listening sessions, um, in the past, and I think that's a good, um, good thing to do. We did one on, um, safety and we had done another one on race. And so I think that is something that's super helpful. The pandemic really kind of shut down our open forums for a while. So for two years, we weren't able to do anything like that. And I think we continue to try and figure out what's the best way to communicate to our families. And I think, you know, we sent out a lot of emails and emails get lost and how can we help the website to be more transparent? And I think communication is something we need to focus on. But I would say that we read every single email that came to us. Um, we listened to all the parent comments and we tried to be as transparent- Um, we listen to all the parent comments and we try to be as transparent as you can within the rules of the school board.
Thank you. And last to Nathan.
Yeah, I think that um, I, yeah, I think like just to echo um points that have been already made by Dan and Kristen, I think that um, you know, literally every discussion that we have as a board happens in the public. So, I I don't know how we could be any more transparent than that. And I don't, I don't, so I don't know if this is an issue of people feel like there's something happening, but it's not. But I can tell you um as a board member that it couldn't be more, our our decision-making process, and our discussions couldn't be any more transparent. I do think though, um, that maybe underlying this question is this issue of, how does the community engage in affecting and understanding where board members are coming from, like outside of these very structured, meetings? Um, how do they engage in conversations with board members? And there's always been this opportunity, you know, our contact information is is online and stuff like that. I know now we get a lot of emails that we all read. And I do think uh to Kristen's point, our public forums have kind of, you know, gone away during the pandemic. It's something that we talked a lot about as a board in our meetings. Um, it's something that is on everybody's list of things that we want to work on. Uh, going forward also is is being a bit more engaged or a lot more engaged with the community.
Thank you. And now we'll be moving on to the the closing comments. So you each have sixty seconds for your closing remarks and we'll begin with Kristen.
I'd like to look again to thank everyone um for listening. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters in Bay Bridge for hosting this event, and for the library for helping us out. Um, I also want to thank my two other candidates um for running and for, you know, promoting the school board. Um, being a school board member is not what it used to be when I started six years ago. The fast, the last two years have probably been some of the most challenging of my life. Um, but I think some of the most rewarding also. I feel my experience as a pediatrician taking care of kids in this district for the last twenty years, along with my six years on the school board, make me well can, well qualified to continue as a school board member. Um, I think as we look back, you know, I'm ready to move forward from the pandemic, hopefully, and really focus on, what a school board should be really focused on. Let's identify those educational gaps. Let's continue to build our school community. Let's continue the hard work on equity. Let's continue to support our staff and our administration. And let's bring our community back together. And most importantly, let's serve our children here. Um, thank you for trusting me for the last six years to serve your children, and I hope you continue to support me in the next three. Thanks and have a good night.
Thank you. Nathan, your closing comments.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for uh both the participants and people who organized this and and my fellow candidates. Um, I, you know, it's, the last two years have been uh very interesting because, I think that the relationship between the school board and the community and the the schools and community has been fundamentally, different, you know, like as we learned how disruptive it was to, not have kids in school and and you know, that became our focus is to keep them in school. And I hopefully we're exiting this time where, at the board level, we're making these decisions that changes everybody's daily lives so much. And we can go back to, as we've started focusing on talking about strategic planning, um, we started focusing on a lot of the things that came up at tonight's meeting. We want to start talking about our efforts on equity again. We want to start talking about, um, engaging with the community. Uh, we want to start talking about the long-term financial issues that are facing public schools, the supply of teachers and and all these things now that we can put the pandemic in our rearview mirror. And again, continue to to provide a world-class education for our kids.
Thank you. And Dan, your closing comments.
Uh, first, thank you to Julie, you and Nancy, who probably had the the hardest and most monotonous job of the entire uh forum, holding up the cards. Um, thank you to my fellow candidates. Thank you to the community who came out to stick with us till nine o'clock here, as I'm sure bedtimes are approaching for kids. Um, I I'm excited about, I was excited back in October to see the annual meeting with, um, an auditorium just packed with people who were worried about our schools. And quite honestly, um, wasn't sure if I was gonna run again. And that meeting energized me, because I saw and it confirmed how much the community cares about education and how much our parents and our community are behind the schools, and and the phenomenal staff. Um, I know it's tough to to unseat incumbents, especially um all the hard work they've done. I'm grateful to the work they've done the last two years. I'm um hopeful that you'll give me an opportunity to show that I can continue to carry the torch, um, and continue to keep the the district an exceptional place to learn. Um, if I'm not fortunate to get elected, which I hope that's what happens on April fifth, um, know that I will continue to work hard and advocate for our kids and our community and serve uh from a seat as a community member.
Thank you. So this concludes the Whitefish Bay School Board Candidate Forum. On behalf of Bay Bridge and the League of Women Voters of Milwaukee County, thank you to the community for your questions, and thank you to our candidates for participating in the forum, and running for a position on the Whitefish Bay Village Board. Thanks to each of you, Kristen Bensick Budrow, Nathan Christensen, and Dan Tyke. You may view a recording of this event on the Bay Bridge YouTube channel and on vote411.org. And that's votethenumbers411.org. As a reminder, the election will be held April fifth. Information on voting and elections can be found at vote411.org, the League of Women Voters Milwaukee County website, and at myvote.wi.dev. Please visit the vote411.org website to view your sample ballot, information on your candidates, and a detailed question and answer section. Polls are open April fifth from seven AM to eight PM, and with proper documentation, you may still register when you go to vote. You may still request an absentee mail-in ballot, and you may cast an in-person absentee ballot at the Village Hall, from Tuesday, March twenty-second through Friday, April first. Voters will be required to show photo ID in order to vote. Information on voting and elections can be found at vote411.org, uh, the League of Women, I already said all this. So we want your vote to count, so please let us know if you have questions. The League of Women Voters reminds you that our democracy depends on citizen involvement. I trust that you all intend to vote in the election on April fifth. And I hope that you will help increase voter turnout by encouraging your friends to vote as well. Thank you and have a wonderful evening. Thank you, everybody.